Welcome everyone to the February 16th Board of Education meeting at Byram Hills. Call this meeting to order at 6:06 and we'll ask everyone to stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll ask for our motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Let's go.
All in favor? Excellent. Okay, so that brings us to our new business. And I will just explain to the public kind of where we are. We talked about this at the end of the meeting last time, but I think it's important to just go through everything again. I first want to welcome our two candidates for our open seat for the Board of Education. And I want to say to both of you that we're so thankful that you came forward. Clearly, both of you are involved in the community and are willing to, you know, put yourself out there to be evaluated for this board slot. For that, we are very, very grateful. Just in terms of the process, so it started back in December when we found out that Ira won the election to become judge. And so we talked at the December meeting about how there was going to be a spot and we'd have to figure out how to handle it. And then in January, we had a full discussion once Ira's resignation came in, which was effective December 31st. And we talked about at least exploring an appointment to the seat, which would take place between the time that we appoint and then the election date. Once the election comes, then the seat would, you know, would be going to the person that got elected by the public. And in terms of appointment, there's actually a section of school law, 514, you know, that states that laws impose upon central school districts the power and duty to fill a vacancy. So it's certainly your best practice to, you know, to do our duty to try to fill the seat. And then we asked for parties to notify us by January 28th. There are actually three parties that came forward. One of the individuals that came forward was not a Byram Hills voter, so did not have the ability under the law to like sit on the board. So they were disqualified for that reason. The two of you are, and so you continued in the process and then submitted some answers to questions and your resume to us, which was extraordinarily helpful. And now we're here tonight really just with the opportunity to provide a public statement and just really touching on whatever you want to touch on. So it could be unstructured, but you know, certainly why you're interested in the board and, you know, just what you think you can, you know, add to the board. And really it could be three to five, you know, two, three, five minute range, that sort of range. If any of the board members have questions, they can ask. Otherwise, based on the materials we've read and then what you say, maybe there won't be any questions. And then I think what we'll do after both statements is at that point, see if there's any discussion that anybody wants to have it. If not, adjourn. And then at the March meeting, which is coming up right around the corner after February break, at that meeting, the plan would be to ultimately have, you know, the rest of the discussion and to take, if there's any, and then take a vote in terms of appointing the seat. And just the way it works is that you need to have a consensus of four existing board members. So if there's a consensus around a candidate for four, then the seat gets filled. If there isn't, let's say we're three people, you know, or if it were split, then the seat would remain big. That's kind of how, how the process works. So I think that is the full overview. And I think probably what, you know, we thought would be a good way to do it is we just thought we would go alphabetical. So Melissa Jacobs first and then Gwen Torrey. And maybe have Gwen step out when Melissa speaks and then Melissa step out when Gwen speaks. But just to note, this will all be taped and on the web, so you can watch each other afterwards. But we just figured this way, you at least have the, you know, the, you know, ability to, yeah, to make comments. So I think we can, if anybody has any, either questions or comments, or if you have anything else that you think of, otherwise we can.
Yeah, I, I think I just want to echo what you said about thank you for considering this role as a board member. And, you know, boards are the support of the superintendent, right? My existence here today, my continued existence and the reason why I haven't just gotten in a boat and taken a paddle, is because we have really great members in this community, right? You know that, but without a board supporting a superintendent, and that doesn't mean I do things and the board says yes, right? That, that isn't the way our relationship is, but that the support is always there. And, and this board has taken on pretty extraordinary things over the past couple of years, has not always agreed, and that's good to have on a board, right? To hear opinions and flesh out those opinions and then ultimately decide what's best for a school community. So the role is not what it used to be, just like a superintendent's job is not what it used to be. But, but I know despite all of the hard work, we all find it really rewarding. And we're in a great place and this is a terrific board. So despite pandemic and divisiveness and anything else that's going on in the world right now, it's a respectful dialogue here and always with children in mind. So that is what keeps this superintendent coming to work every day. So.
I just want to make sure you guys know you don't get paid, right?
Why is there an exception about that?
There seems to be a question.
About whether you get paid.
It's totally voluntary.
In Yonkers, you do get paid, in cities you get paid, but not in Chatham or Chapel Park or any public school.
There's some parts of the country here and there where there's been very, it's pretty rare, certainly not here.
We get dinner.
Get a salad.
And COVID tests.
COVID tests?
That everyone else gets too.
Exactly. All right, so I guess with that, why don't we start? Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Anthony, there's, I think, right across the hall in Andrew's room. If you could just let her in so she could just kind of hang, it's a nice comfy chair and spot there. And then I'll come and get you, Gwen.
There's candy in there also.
Yeah.
That's a bonus. Is there anywhere in particular I should, I should stand or?
You could sit there. I guess just the question of sound.
Sit, stand, yeah.
Whatever you're comfortable with. Good, you're good then. So yeah, whatever you're comfortable, you can stay there or whatever's better for you.
I will just stay in my comfy seat.
Awesome.
So hi, everybody. I'm Melissa Jacobs. And I want to thank you all for the opportunity to share a few thoughts today about my interest in joining the Byram Hills Board of Education. I've lived in this district for almost 20 years. And my kids have been involved in so many of our amazing districts offerings. I've loved watching them grow and achieve through so many of our four schools incredible programs, like Project Create at Coman Hill, Sale at Crittenen, athletic teams, the debate team, our district's award-winning Authentic Science Research Program. And I'm really truly proud to be a part of a community that values excellence in education for all students. So a little about myself and my kids. My husband and I have three sons, all of whom attended the Byram Hills School starting in kindergarten. My oldest son Alex graduated from Byram in 2017. And he recently graduated from Vanderbilt University. My middle son Ethan graduated from Byram Hills in 2019. And he's a junior at Cornell. And my youngest son Owen is now a freshman at Byram Hills High School. So about myself, I have a lifelong commitment to quality public education. I come from a family of public school teachers, my grandparents, parents and siblings. And I studied education in college. I got a BA in child study at Tufts University, a master's in education at NYU, and recently, an additional New York State certification in special education. I started my career as a second grade teacher right down the road in Pleasantville. And over the years, I've been a substitute teacher in various classrooms in Westchester, including Coman Hill, Wampus and Crittenen. My background as an educator would be an asset to our school board and would give me an informed perspective to help make broad educational decisions for our district while understanding the impact that they have on everyone involved, including students, parents, staff. I've been an active member of our district and school community for many years. Since 2016, I've been a board member of the Byram Hills Education Foundation, serving as secretary, serving on the grant review committee, and serving on the executive board. I've co-chaired the auction fundraising committee for six years on the BHF, successfully planning and implementing our annual auction, which this year raised over $70,000 to help fund grants in all four of our schools to complement the programs that this district provides. I'm so proud of the work of the BHF and the grants that we funded to improve our students' school experience, like the Coman Hill Indoor Play Space, Library 2.0 at the middle school, Hub 21 at Wampus, and last year's technology grant, including viewsonic monitors and software to keep our students' education consistent even when the students were learning virtually. And of course, thanks to all of you for approving these incredible initiatives. These and so many other BHF grants have helped enhance the educational experience of all students in our community and complement the rich programs and services that this school district provides. I'm confident that my experience on the BHF would help me be a productive and thoughtful member of the Board of Education. In addition to my role at the BHF, I volunteered for years with the PTSA in various roles. I co-chaired the Teacher Appreciation Luncheon at Wampus and served as class parent for all of my children during their years at Coman Hill and Wampus. I also co-chaired the PTSA's Cultural and Curricular Education Committee at Wampus. And I'm currently the co-chair of that same committee at Crittenen since 2012, working with Ms. Lappel and Mr. Ancona to bring various presentations to our middle school students to enhance and enrich the curriculum. I also served on the Challenge Success Steering Committee at Crittenen. And I've been on the district's site-based team as a parent contributor for several years as well. Throughout my boys' school careers, I volunteered in many other capacities in the schools, from book fairs to field trips, and even as a parent volunteer for reading and editing Authentic Science Research papers for our high school students. I believe that my background in education, my board experience on the BHF, and my in-depth involvement as a parent in all of our schools will help me represent a broad population of our community as a school board member. I look forward to continuing my involvement with the district and participating in robust conversations on the many issues that accelerate the growth of our educational community, including budget decisions, policy adoption and implementation, and of course advocacy for the best interests of all students in all of our schools. I would love the opportunity to support Byram Hills' continued emphasis on academic excellence and rigor while also addressing students' social and emotional growth. I believe we need to continue to hire and retain the superlative teachers and principals that my sons have experienced, individuals who are truly invested in our students' education and who are a vital part of our learning community. I believe strongly in our district's continuing to pilot initiatives that enrich the curriculum as well as providing exciting classes and learning opportunities that appeal to all students at all levels. I believe it's vital to our students', our children's growth to actively participate in their own educational decisions. And it is these opportunities that make our district stand apart from others and ensure that Byram Hills students are equipped to become well-rounded and productive members of our world community. I hope you will consider me as a candidate for the open board seat. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions?
Are we going to ask some individual questions or both together?
I think individual, yeah, we can just do the questions now and then we'll do the questions for Gwen when she comes in. Okay.
So since I don't have any vote in this, can I just say thank you for all that you've done for the school? That was a beautiful, you should give that to your children. Maybe you really should, you really should. And I don't know many, as far as anything goes, but I just want to say that that is, that is one lifelong record of giving to the school districts and how much we appreciate that.
It's been my pleasure, really.
It's pretty awesome.
I'm exhausted. Enjoy it. It's tiring. Lots of energy.
And all the different angles and components in terms of how you.
I really enjoy getting to know the district in that way. I feel like just as a kind of parent in the different schools and as a, you know, self-help as an educator and on different committees, I feel like it's really given me a lot of different interesting angles into how amazing our district is.
So I have a question.
Yeah.
One of the things that I think has been most challenging for me being on the board was managing the interpersonal relationships versus being a board member, both in the community and in the school, like with the teachers and the principals and with the other parents who you're friends with, and now suddenly you have this other role. And it's, it can be very challenging. So I'm just wondering your thoughts on how you would manage that. You know, trying to be more specific for you. Like, for example, if, if there was an issue with your son at school, you know, how do you, how do you navigate the teachers and the relationship and letting them know that you're there as a parent, not as a board member? And the same thing with perhaps your friends and your.
Well, I think, I, I, I feel it's important to compartmentalize a little bit. And I think that even, it's interesting that you mentioned that because even as a, both a sub in some of the schools and a parent, I've had to do that already. So, you know, think about, and, and, you know, as a parent coming in as a, as a teacher in the, in the schools, there's, there had to be some sort of compartmentalization of that. And, you know, coming in to teach a class for a day means that I'm there as a teacher. I'm not there as a, as a parent. So I think it's just a matter of kind of understanding the different roles. I think people in the community can have many hats, wear many hats. And I think that it's just a matter of understanding and knowing that you, that you play different roles. So as a parent, if I have an issue with a teacher, with one of my children, I would go through the proper channels and I would, you know, not assume that there was any difference in my role as a parent than anybody else. It's, you know, it's how we have to, I think, navigate these, these ways, you know?
Thank you.
One question just about serving on a board. So BHF is a great example because you, you've been on it for many years and part of the activities. Just kind of the lessons that you learned along the way in terms of just, you know, being a, being a good protective board member?
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's, it's been such a great journey for me on the BHF. And I feel like I, I look back from when I started and I sort of was bewildered by the whole mechanism of how everything worked and sort of the learning curve, you know, of, of just sort of understanding, well, the grant process of course, but even the fundraising piece. And I feel like I learned so much on my six years and even being part of the auction committee and learning to run, put together an auction, you know? Just knowing that, that, that those funds were going towards the schools was gratifying and sort of enabled me to learn that. But I think the piece that I, I probably would say the most is that I, I learned the importance of being a good listener, being diplomatic. You know, there are lots of sides to lots of issues. And I think that it is important as a board member to be able to be a good listener, an active listener, and to, rather than react, to take in different points of view and process and sort of learn that there has to be some sort of either a middle ground or compromise or something that we can do, there's a process. So I think, I think sort of that's what I learned. We're, we're a big board, the BHF. We have, you know, a lot of members. And so you get a lot of different opinions. And at some point, we, it's, everyone on the board, I think, does a great job of this, of sort of listening and making sure to realize that not everybody has the same views. So I would say that was probably my biggest takeaway as a board member.
Thank you.
I would just ask, it's, let's say applying for this board, this interim board seat so close to an election, what brings you to doing that today? Because it's, you know, a very nice thing to do, but. What, what brings you to do that versus just waiting for the election in May?
Well, to be honest, this is something that I've considered for a long time, something I've been interested in, possibly trying to become a member of the Board of Education. And as I mentioned, because I have such a commitment to education always, and I'm so interested and fascinated in the workings of the district. And as, as Scott said, just I feel like I've had so many different sort of angles to see the, the different workings of the district. So it's, it's something that's always been in the back of my mind. And when I heard that Ira Schulman got his position and there might be a seat open, I thought, I just thought that might be a sort of a good opportunity. And also knowing that I'm rolling off the BHF this year. And it's taken really so many hours of work and so much time, which is amazing. I love every minute of it, between the subcommittees and the board meetings, putting together the auction and the, you know, just all of the other sort of inner workings. So I think that I was kind of thinking that this felt like it could be a great new way for me to give back to the district and to put some time into really understanding those other inner workings I haven't seen yet and that I haven't had a chance to, to understand. And I, I'm fascinated by just sort of the work that you do. And we, you know, the community appreciates so much what, what all of you do. So sort of was looking for an opportunity to give back in a different way.
Would you have to drop off the BHF board early to, if you got this position?
No, it is a great question. I'd have to look into that.
Oh.
Probably.
Yeah.
Probably.
Yeah.
I think so.
So your, but your term wouldn't normally be up till the end of the year?
My term is, right, my term is up at the, right at the end of this year. But luckily we had our successful options.
That's interesting. Thank you.
Anybody else have questions?
Good.
All right. Thank you so much. Very, very much.
Thank you. So I have one who graduated in 2017. He's, he's just starting work in the city. He graduated from Vanderbilt last year. And I have one who graduated in 2019. He's a junior college. And then I have a freshman here in high school.
They all started here at kindergarten?
All started here at kindergarten.
And they all stayed in the district, capable?
All stayed in the district. Loved every minute.
And your older one even came back to New York.
That's right. I know. It's a bonus for me, right? He's in the city.
Thanks.
That's, I'm good.
Melissa can go, right? She doesn't have to come back in.
Yeah, why, why don't you go maybe way outside and then just in case anybody has anything at the end? I don't think there will be, but just in case.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Take the candy.
I have to take the candy.
Okay.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Melissa.
Melissa.
Yeah. Thank you for your consideration.
For Gwen. Thanks, Melissa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I will.
We'll come back.
I'm going to leave my doctor.
And also see if you have questions in there.
Perfect.
Thank you so much.
We didn't ask a shared question.
Party save over to us. So.
You can't have a discussion.
Remember the questions you had because in hiring, it's fair to ask the same questions.
Yes, absolutely.
That's a good point.
I think mine was only for your kids.
But they're all, yeah.
Mine can eat. I'll go first because I remember mine.
You were managing the interpersonal relationships and Scott was what?
Thank you. Thank you for, for waiting. And yeah, you can jump right into, into, you know, the comments you want to make and then at the end we can ask some questions.
Great. And thanks for waiting for me.
No problem.
So a little, you know, pulled pretty much a little bit from my resume and then add on. So I do value lifelong learning, you know, whether it's in the traditional classroom or elsewhere. And I believe not like reinventing the wheel, the wheel all the time, right? Using my interests and talents, putting my role right now as a parent first, right? And it's always led me to what to do next, whether it's a volunteer thing or in any area of my life. So I would like to learn and contribute to the educational future of my own committee. Committee, community, my own committee, using some of the skill set that I've already built over the years. As a school board member, you're a representative of the community. And I realize these activities require a significant amount of time, but it's extremely well-spent time when you consider that you're helping to shape the future of children in your own community. So I'm from Staten Island. Has anyone been through? Okay, so I know, roll your eyes, expensive and a lot of traffic. But point is, I grew up in New York City school system. But if you know Staten Island, it's not like the other five boroughs, it's the fifth one. So, you know, growing up, and I also started working in Staten Island in the schools as a teacher when I, you know, came back from college. You know, it's a much different makeup. So then I was in Queens for a while and then I moved to, my husband's from Westchester. So then I'm up here and I'm like, you get snow days? I remember, you know, like the, you know, the mayor never called us when I was a kid and said you had a snow day. But, but my point is, it was very different, right? Like, it's not that, you know, New York City is what it is. It's a whole different, you know, setup. But the point is, in Staten Island, I grew up in a pretty, like the southern tip. So we were like, oh, those are those like country people. Not that we were, but you know, it was very different. So I feel like did the school board even know like what we needed, right? So here I am in Armagh where there's like parents on the school board. And it's, so I was always, it's just very different. And through my career as a teacher, I mentioned I was a CIT. So I was an itinerant teacher. So I was in Scarsdale and Portchester and Yonkers and a few other places. So I saw even within, you know, Westchester, how dealing with, the boards were different and things ran the same to a certain extent, but it was just more focused on the community as opposed to, you know, you're in the city school system and I definitely had a great education. I remember in middle school, I had like metal workshop, like you don't get that. So it was great, but it was just not unique to the community I grew up in, which wasn't inner city. So when I moved to Westchester, I noticed a difference. And then, like I said, from the resume, during my career, I've had opportunities to support children in the classroom, advocate on behalf of the, at CSE meetings. All my teaching positions were rewarding, but very different. And like I said in earlier, the CIT, being a special itinerant teacher, I feel like that was like the, the melding of everything. You know, I liked working with the parents and seeing these people, where do I go to get my, my little one's services? And then understanding from the opposite end what it's like to be, I was not in administrative, but had to work with a lot of different administrators. So kind of, you know, you learn how to be in relationship and then learn how to have to work with the child. That was the first and foremost. But it was just, you know, using my communication skills and my emotional connection. That's something you really can't put on paper. So that's why I loved working in that environment because kids aren't numbers on paper, you know? So it was a really great way to put all that together. And yeah, I love that. So school governance is founded on the belief that a group of very different people representing the populations in their district can make better decisions. Kind of like what Jen said early, if you had to do this all on your own, you'd, I don't think you'd get a paddle. I think you'd jump somewhere. But you make better decisions than any one person, right? When you work in a group, you have opinions and, oh, you're right. And you, you pull each other up and you move forward to that next step with the ultimate goal in front of you. So diversity, I think, is really important, for sure. And like I said in the start, like I feel like taking all of my strengths, like what's next? Here I am, right? I understand that being on the Board of Ed means being dedicated to helping the Byram Hills students succeed and ultimately excel as productive citizens. I've pursued this dedication as a community member, involved in the day-to-day workings and spending countless hours volunteering wherever needed. I'm like a, call me 8:00 AM in the morning kind of girl and I'm there, right? So I'm on the committees, I do volunteer, but people like in, over the years, my daughter's 20 now, so I've been here since I'm pregnant, so I've been here a long time. Yeah, I'm always there, right? I may not have the name on the, the paper, but I'm always there. And I like that. That's where I function best. So Byram Hills has always provided ample opportunities in every age group since my kids were in the BH, you know, the technical, the Byram Hills Preschool Association, you know, from then all the way up. I've had the most satisfaction knowing that I would be there, not necessarily getting the credit, but getting the job done for the kids and seeing the outcome of the activities or parties or whatever the volunteer opportunity was. There are other organizations which I've had served on the resume and have always been important to me and the goals behind the organization. It needed people on the ground, right? So if I believed in the goal and I maybe had a connection to it, I'd be that person getting the job done. So I realized being on the board offers almost like the opposite perspective. Like you're on the ground as parents, but that's about it, right? Like you're here making the decisions. And so it's exciting for me to have like the opening that Ira left to, to experience the other perspective. So with this in mind, I appreciate it's best to be open-minded. You have to work with each other and opinions with each other, with the community and fellow board members. So in the end, as all the endeavors I've chosen in my life, the goal and the audience need to be the priority. In this case, my service will be for the children of the Byram Hills community. And, you know, can't think of anywhere else to spend my unpaid time. And that's all I got.
Thank you. That's great.
Gwen, before there are questions, I get a chance to comment because I don't, I don't have a vote.
Got it, yeah.
Which is, which is great. And I just appreciate the perspective you're taking, right? Perspective of a parent, perspective of what it's like to be a board member, perspective of a child not being a number. It's just, it's great. So thanks for that.
Thank you.
Question time?
Yep, question time.
So my question is from one of the, one of the challenges, the things that I found most challenging being on the board was navigating the relationships between me and the community members who I'm friends with and the, the teachers and administrators in the school, me being parent versus me being, me as a board member. And some sort of navigating how those relationships work in challenging situations. And I'm just curious your perspective on how you would manage those, those relationships.
Right. It's interesting because having the experience in, in different school districts, you get, there is a vibe in, in each of them. And you're always going to get someone who doesn't like the way it runs, right? Whether it's a parent or a teacher. But the interesting thing, let me backtrack. My mom, growing up, she was always a PTSA president, PTA president, it wasn't SA. And I remember like on her table, she had that little gray book, Robert's Rules of Water. And I think that's, either you follow that or something similar. So the one thing I always try to keep in mind that there is a chain of command, if you will, right? So I know like there's certain discussions that happen on a board that you are sworn to, it's not, there's certain things that stay here, not because you're trying to be private, because if everyone heard every discussion or everything that came across, it would just be too confusing. So you have to know that there are limits. And I don't know all those limits because there's only so much, you know, I've read a lot about, you know, certain duties and there's an oath of office and all that. So I'm very much, as much as I like to be emotional and part of the conversation, I realize that there's rules to be followed and rules to be respected. And that there is, you know, you could talk to the superintendent to get her feedback. You talk to other board members, like if I'm having a challenge, like, well, how do I go to Tazadah tomorrow morning with this, whatever maybe was talked about the night before? And to know that people are going to have to know from me, at least the people I know, that they know that I believe in, I don't want to say the system because that sounds wrong, believe that there's a way to do things and you try your best. Not that emotions don't happen, not that you don't have a differing view, but you have to respect that. Well, that's a great, if someone says, well, why did this happen? It's like, you know, it's a great question. We talked about it. Go watch it on TV, maybe would be the answer. And maybe that's something you could take to your principal. So either direct their energy in the right way or give them the facts, but always being positive that it's all for the best for the kids. So, you know, I guess it depends on what's said, but just believe in the system and know that I've taken an oath. There's certain things that I could talk about. Does that answer your question? Okay.
I was just going to ask about some of your prior experiences on boards. I know that there are a couple of different organizations where you mentioned your board experience. And just from, from the time that you were on those boards, just a little bit about lessons learned, your best practices, lessons learned from those board experiences.
Well, the good news is it was always something where I wanted, you know, to be here just like this. The one in particular, you know, with CCFA Crohn's and Colitis Foundation. Actually, the reason why we got involved, not my husband and I, is our, they're actually Byram Hill graduates. They're twins, they develop Crohn's disease. And we will, you know, it hit close to home and, you know, you want to help, right? And at the time, they were really trying to raise money for the Westchester Fairfield County Organization. So the thing that I learned the most is I may understand money and I may understand percentages, but I was always shocked that even though the bottom line and the goal was to help raise money for these research and to get to the bottom of what caused Crohn's and colitis, a lot of time really had to be spent on budget. And that part, like I said, I followed, I understood, but I really didn't have much input. So I would ask questions and I would defer, you know, if there's anything that I didn't understand, I would get help with. So I learned that I may be on a board for like a certain reason, but I'm not going to have all the expertise, if you will, right? Just like I said before, when it came to the fundraisers, that's the day like where I would shine. Not because I was, I just knew everything that was going on and very good at like seeing that global view and then knowing where to delegate and jump in and figure it out. Because you have to be on the planning board to understand everything. But if someone that day asked me, what percentages are, I'd be like, no, go see that one. So I knew my, so I'd like to understand it all because I feel it helps me be more effective on my specific role. And I also realized that whether it was that or at a CSE meeting with the kid, which is not a board, but in other words, I was representing that child, doesn't always go your way. And that's a very micro level compared to a board and learning how to deal with that. You know, I didn't have that experience with the CCFA because in the end, we raised a lot of money, it was great. But the day-to-day stuff, it made me know that I have strengths and I have weaknesses and I need to ask for help in understanding certain things. But the end of the day, you also have to know you did your best and then let go of the results.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My question is, so what brings you to apply for this board seat, this interim board seat at this time and I guess versus just running for the, you know, the election in May? So if you could talk a little bit about or just what, why you would want to be on the board?
I'm laughing because in hindsight, running, it's just you run and you, you know, you get voted this. But this is actually good. It really made me think more like why, you know, I wanted to do this. So cost, cost benefit. So I hate saying this, but it's like before COVID, I feel like every time, you know, I was actively teaching, you know, fitness. I love working with kids and adults with yoga. I was never like, how do you say? Like I didn't work at the big gyms of the world. I love working in the small ones where you really got to know people, right? So I would teach seniors, I would teach kids and, you know, so I was doing enough to, to, you know, you have to, you have to do continuing ed. And so it was like just keeping the juices flowing, if you will. And, you know, and then, you know, the kids went remote and people like, oh, do you want to teach on Zoom? I'm like, no, I want to be with the people. I couldn't, I couldn't get into that. And plus, you know, at that time, none of us knew it was, whatever, I had to manage, I had to put my family first, right? And since then, I really haven't built that back up. Studios closed that I worked at. And even though I had a lot of connections with people, once again, it, it just wasn't, I'm more an in-person person, right? And kind of hands-on and more organic as opposed to, sure, I have a plan, but as a, as a fitness person and especially working with like fragile populations or elderly, you have to switch gears and it's, I couldn't do that in the same way. And, you know, when the seat came open, I said, okay, not 100% sure like whether, figured it was a good opportunity to almost see what it's really all about. Because, I mean, how much can you know? You read online, you talk to, you know, you watch the meetings. So that's why I said, let me try for the seat because then, you know, in a month or so, I'll know whether to put that April, whatever signature in. So it's just, I, I don't want to get stagnant in any area of my life and going back to that whole fitness world just doesn't seem doable right now, if that makes, if that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you.
How many kids have?
Three.
Three.
I have a 20-year-old, she's in college. Michael's a sophomore in high school and then Matthew's in sixth grade.
And they've all been here since kindergarten?
Yeah. I moved when I was pregnant.
They all started and ended here?
No. Nope.
Where did they go?
Michael, right now, actually, he's, he's a golfer and he's pretty committed to it. And I could share more details later, but for public comments, I'll just say at the, you know, the end of the summer last year, he, in June, in January of freshman year, you know, there was no sports for anyone and he needed something. And we found out about this golf school in Ridgefield and it was after school. So we drive him up there and then he loved it, loved it, loved it. He's always loved it since he was three years old. We've gone to the Grif, he hits balls, he's, he loves it. And he's really good at it too. I just don't say that, like I go golfing with him, I'm like, oh my gosh, how do you do this? But anyway, and in August, he said, Mom, he goes, they have a school here. I'm like, okay, great. You know, I really came, I literally came out of the blue, like probably August 15th. And I didn't have any idea this was coming. This was my kid who I thought was going to like live home forever. You know how you think you know your kids? Anyway, I'm on camera. Long story short, I said, okay, fill out the application. He's 15, I'm thinking he loves golf, but is it? He filled out the application. I said, all right, see if you can get a scholarship. Fill out. It was so self-driven and he's coming. And I remember speaking with Tim, I point because he was there last week. I said, I need to make sure whatever he does this year, because my goal is he's not staying there, he's coming back to Byram. And that I want to make sure all his coursework was in place, make sure he has his language credit. And he does, he's coming back, he told me like last month. Because the thing with golf that we're learning is he wants to play golf. He's not like a, like on the Tiger Woods course, if that's even like acceptable to say, he doesn't want that. He wants to really like coach and there's a whole business in golf. And he's learned that by being there. He sees people who are in this industry. And he also, it's afforded him a lot of opportunities because it's a different process to go to college. If it's, you know, it's, it's, we learn that. So it was a surprising turn of events, one that I didn't expect. And I was about to tell him in like March, like you're coming back next year, I don't care, you know, I was going to put, he decided he knew, like he's like, I want to come back, I want to play basketball, I want to be, you know? So it's been great. And now he knows the process. My point is to go to college for golf and hone in on which opportunities are out there, which he did at a really young age and was totally self-motivated. So I was really happy for him and he's an athlete.
And the other, the other two?
Sixth grade, Natalie's, I mean, Michael Matthews in sixth grade and Natalie's in Villanova.
Okay. And then they went straight through Byram Hills?
What's that?
They went straight through in Byram Hills?
Nope.
Any other questions?
Was that everybody? That was everything we asked?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Glenn, do you want to, do you, do you want to ask, you want to have them both in here to ask if they have any questions?
Yeah.
Together?
Exactly.
Because one of you may have questions, the other one, it's good to listen and answer, right? Thanks, Anthony. You didn't know that was part of it tonight.
I know. It's within the, you said it was here.
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Remember when we had Jose working outside too? Anthony is just like Jose. I think if I sneeze at the other end of the parking lot, I'll hear, bless you. Here we know like where you are.
You both. Thank you both for sharing your evening with us and for sharing your stories. We much appreciate it. And I think we just, before you go, just would ask if you had any other questions for us, otherwise, you know, the next step will be the March, March meeting, which I think is March 8th, but let me just make sure on my.
Yeah. It's on our, it's right.
Yep, Tuesday, March 8th. That's, that's it. That's where we would, you know, report to make the decision. But any other questions or?
I think it's important to know too, that the decision is made completely in public, right? So there's, there's not any like back-channeling conversation that happens.
Yeah, we're not allowed to have.
Yeah, not allowed. There are, there are certain conversations that are allowed to occur in executive session and conversations that must be in public. So any, anything that is said between the group at that board meeting is, is what's going to be said and only that. So it's just nice for you to know that. Like you always wonder when you're doing something like, what's happening now?
Nothing's happening. No one's talking. No one, we can't talk.
Nothing's happening. And that's part of what, just so you guys understand why this has taken so long.
That's right.
It's because we can't discuss it between board meetings. We have to wait for a public session, we have to wait for a board meeting to have any further discussion of where we're going to go in the process.
So who, someone talked about, like you said, how do you differentiate speaking to someone in public about board? Like who advised you on all those rules? Because it seems like it's a learning curve of learning. So do you talk, like with the new person, did someone take them under?
Oh, absolutely.
There's courses.
So there are two persons that we are.
You just let him just figure it out.
Typically, when you join a board, you take, in fact, it's a New York State requirement. So there's a, there's like a financial course just to understand how to read financial statements, which are different. Even if you read corporate financial statements under GAAP, these financial statements, they look different. And obviously some board members don't have a financial background. So that's for that. And then the second is governance trading. Governance trading, they address that question. But there's some really specific laws that govern what can be done in public and what has to be done in executive session. And they're actually not overly complicated because there are really very few things that could be done in executive session. But it's some of the really obvious things, like when you have a contract negotiation or if you're talking about, you know, individual disciplinary matter, whether that be staff or whether that be student, if you're, what if some other reason? There's a legal matter. If you, if you're talking about litigation or something like that. So, so, and then if there's ever a question, that's, you know, every district has attorneys that could make sure that the rules are being, you know, followed properly. So if there's ever, you know, an area of question, then, then you make sure you get, you know, good legal advice in terms of what can and what can't be. But that's how the agendas get put together.
And the easiest piece is that the board president and the superintendent are the spokespersons for the district. So, you know, you don't ever have to feel like, well, what if I'm coming out of a store and the news is there and they ask me a comment? Like that's what you say, the board of education president is the spokesperson of the district.
Right?
Even if you want to say something, you can.
Yeah.
It's good to know that.
And we ask each other all the time.
Yeah.
I've been on the board six years, this is finishing my sixth year.